It is 4:00 PM on October 21st, 2025, and welcome to the City of Iowa City Work Session. We're going to start with Agenda Item Number One, which is a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We're going to be going over the comprehensive plan update. Before we get started, just wanted to go ahead and welcome our commissioners. And you know, we don't see you all often, so we'd just like to maybe have you introduce yourself and to the council if you don't mind. We'll start with legendary Commissioner Billy Townsend.
Billy Townsend, Planning and Zoning Commission, and almost 40-year Iowa City resident.
Great. Awesome.
James Davies, Planning and Zoning Commission, also a 40-year Iowa City resident, born and raised, fairly new to the commission, but excited to hear about the comprehensive plan updates.
Great.
Steve Miller, also on the Planning and Zoning Commission, 10-year Iowa City resident, and this is my first year on the P&amp;Z, also an architect in town, and I'm on the Strategic Plan Steering Committee, so I've enjoyed that process.
Great.
Maggie Elliott, Planning and Zoning, I bet I'm a 40-year resident, too.
Great. Awesome. Well, welcome to all of you. We'll get started with the comprehensive plan update, and I'll just turn it right on over to you.
Okay. Mayor and council members, planning commissioners, my name is Christopher Shires, Principal with Confluence with the consultant team. The city has hired to lead this process on updating your comprehensive plan. I have a brief presentation to give you an update of where we're at on the planning process, and so want to do a recap of the public engagement that we've wrapped up, then go through some of the details of what we've heard from the community members, talk about that statistically valid survey that I believe you've all have received a copy of it.
I'm going to have you speak directly into the.
Oh, am I not being loud enough? Oh, I can be a lot louder. I apologize.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Christopher Shires, Principal with Confluence. So with this presentation, also want to get into the results of that community survey, just hit some of the highlights, as well as go through the key themes and takeaways that we've developed. And then I want to pause and make sure I answer any questions you may have. And frankly, would love to know your thoughts and ideas as we kind of reveal at least what we've heard from the community. Would love to know your surprises, and then what's next from here. So moving right in, so for public engagement, we had kind of a robust process, a series of community listening sessions, neighborhood meetings, pop-up events, and then some strategic charrettes as well for a couple of key areas in the community. We also have our online engagement website, because not everybody was able to participate with us in person. We want to make sure that we have a lot of different methods for people to provide their input to us. All of this was a strategic effort, and so on this slide, we're just kind of showing the details of all these different methods to meet with the community, as well as the different ways that we ask them for their feedback and input, so we could then correlate that into some results. Marketing of this was very important. We worked very closely with your staff for those social media pushes, the QR code handouts for our link to the website. We did things in multiple languages, in particular Arabic and Spanish. We had some direct postcard and mailings, and of course, our online engagement website. So first off, I want to talk a little bit about our stakeholder interviews and our focus group meetings. And so we reached out to about 75 individuals, various community members representing a lot of different agencies, individual aspects of the community. I had a great response at 38 interviews. I conducted most of them personally, and it was a lot of fun. I met a lot of really great folks doing some really wonderful things in your community. We also had a series of focus group meetings with various interests. And what we heard from the stakeholders, really, we bucketed into kind of six big things. It was all about housing, our environment and the climate, arts and public spaces, economic development, transportation, and social services. In our, those different focus group meetings, we did break them down into some neighborhood areas, so a northwest, southwest group, a north and northeast group, central, south-central, south, and southeast group, and a little bit of a summary of some of the things we heard. We also continued with non-downtown businesses, bicyclists and pedestrians, and a housing focus group. Climate Action Commission we met with, as well as specifically our Planning and Zoning Commission, to get some feedback directly from them. Not to forget that we also had ETC out of Kansas City conduct a statistically valid survey for the community. This is a way to reach out a little bit wider, but get results that we have a little more statistic comfort with. And so they received 421 completed surveys from their randomized households that they selected. This gives them a 95% level of confidence in the results, and so that statistical error of plus or minus point, 4.8. This little pin map in red shows all those different households, so it's a good cross-section throughout the community, areas with more housing, more density. Of course, those dots are a little bit denser also, to really show that we're hitting the entire community and getting a balanced response. Couple of key takeaways from the survey. One, people are generally very pleased with the community. And so when you look at the perception of the city, based on a national average, we're having a positive as a place to live, that almost 95% response, whereas when we ask that question universally across the country, from all the other cities and communities, ETC surveys, they're more at a 48%, 49% response. And then when we look at that regional, that same kind of percentage, almost 95% versus 50%. So people are very positive about Iowa City, and I heard that. In fact, a lot of the comments are, "We're great. We want to be even better. We want to take ourselves to the next level." There are specific concerns and items that we need to address and work on, and I think you're aware of many of them, but a lot of positivity around our community. When we asked some questions specifically on the level of importance of certain topics, things that rose to the top, parks and recreation, open space, education, water and sewer service, public safety, climate action, and then preservation of existing and development of affordable housing. When we asked about the level of agreement about what should we be thinking about in the future, what are those important things, more sidewalks, walking paths, trails, more affordable housing, you definitely hear that housing theme roll throughout this as well. When we ask about some other questions that are a little more land use-based, so what do we want to see in our community, what are some things we need related to live, work, shop, play, more daycares, more public parks, plazas, open space, more senior housing, we're some of the top vote-getters. When we hit into kind of summarizing all this, so we have the survey, we have those stakeholder interviews, we've had all those public events, public meetings, the city's website, we boiled it down into eight strategic themes, these key takeaways. And we did review this with our advisory committee, and they actually helped us massage these a little bit. And I'm going to run through each of the eight specifically with you, and I'd love to know your thoughts as I go through these. So one, housing for all includes housing affordability, variability, so a lot of different housing types needed, and accessibility to housing. Two, sustainability and resiliency includes our responsiveness and resiliency to changing climate conditions and increasing our biodiversity in our, in our community. Three, culture and placemaking includes community identity enhancements through intentional branding of our entrances into the community, as well as developing third places. These are those other public gathering spaces. Four, economic development, strategic investment into our economic development through incentives, other programs, as well as attracting childcare and development, and even how we interact with our river. Five, transportation and mobility. This includes pedestrian and cyclist safety, expanding public transit. Lot of love for what we have today with public transit, with your bus service, always wanting more. Everybody always wants more, but a lot of love for what's going on now. And then improving our sidewalks and our pedestrian crossings. City Services is number six, includes enhancing city services that we're providing and those amenities, programming, and then other incentives that we may be able to have in place to encourage development. Number seven, parks and recreation, love what we have, always want more, includes improving current park experience, expanding what we have for recreational opportunities, and again, that reference back to the Iowa River, and maybe even a future sports park or additional ball fields. And then community collaboration. This was kind of an interesting one to get so much feedback for a comprehensive plan. As you all know, there's a lot of great nonprofit organizations doing a lot of wonderful things. This desire for more public-private partnerships, collaboration, coordination between all these various entities that are trying to do so many good things in the community. Now, what I should have started out when I talked about those big eight, is those are not in any particular order. They're all important. They're all components that are important. And then certain things with a comprehensive plan, we're able to have more influence, so things related to housing. Some things were not able to have as much influence with a comprehensive plan, say, some of those community collaborations, but we didn't want to shy away from anything we heard from the public. So what I'm curious, and I was trying to go fast, what I'm curious about is, in my presentation here, did anything surprise you? Do you think anything's missing from this big list of eight? And frankly, I'm here for any other questions or comments you have for me.
I'll jump in. Christopher, you mentioned the, all the different ways in which you gathered feedback, and I know there was a lot of open-ended or, you know, questions that are kind of answered on a scale, so we have spectrums of responses that we're looking at. And it strikes me that there's also a lot of overlap, both with these eight categories of things, which all resonate, and I think all make sense to us up here, but there's also overlap in some of the survey questions. So can you just speak to how we can most effectively parse that out when it comes to the actual comprehensive plan document?
Right. And that, that is an excellent question, and it's taking everything with a bit of grain of salt and a little bit of education to understand where that information came from. So it's very purposeful that when we're doing a comprehensive plan, that we're asking the same question multiple different ways at multiple different venues. So we start hearing the themes. And so really, when we develop this eight, and all the, kind of the verbiage that goes underneath them, and they're a little bit longer, went into a little more detail with your advisory committee, it's the things that are a little more reoccurring, or the things that got a little bit louder when I was meeting one-on-one with, say, a community member, or having a one-on-one conversation at a meeting. So it's the things that come up more regularly, a little bit louder, or the things that we think address maybe multiple comments or multiple concerns. Or sometimes, and this is where, you know, especially your role as elected official, it's where we try to draw the line. There are certain things that we can do to impact housing that may not be specifically brought up, but we know from our work that it's something that can help move the needle, move the ball forward on, on a desired goal. And so it's really looking at the, the data in total, how often certain themes and things reoccur in the comments, how strong those comments, and even the source of the comments. And that's also a little bit why we're here, to try to help you weigh through that, because it, it's not easy. And that's one of the big fun things about a comprehensive plan. We're not just talking of housing. We're not just talking about parks. We're talking about all the different things cities are responsible for.
I thank you so much for, I mean, this was really amazing to read through this whole thing. Lots of graphs that I will be gloating over, the fact that 82% of people who live in Iowa City see themselves living here five years from now. I think that's, that sounded high to me, I don't know, for a small city in Iowa. I was curious with question two, because of the kind of like ranked choice model that you used in this question, I just kind of found it interesting that education was at the top.
Right.
And I guess I just don't know what potentially the city's role could be in addressing education, or if it would be us working with the Iowa City Community School District, or the university, just like, can you tell us like maybe what types or kinds of education you were hearing context to that answer?
Yeah. So another really great question, and I love it that you're going through the ETC survey in, in great painstaking detail. Please continue to go through it. There's a lot of good information there. So some of these are a little bit of those kind of broad category responses. So education can mean a lot of things. And so what we'll, what we do is pull in then some of those other feedback points we've heard. And so some of it is the desire that our K through 12 schools, especially public, continue to perform well, that what can we do to make sure our school district's strong and healthy, continuing to be the, a place of choice, because that supports economic development, housing, everything else in our community. It's a quality of life issue. I also would say that that strong response, because normally, house, education is always a top response in most communities. Yours is also heavily weighted just because of the university influence. And so the understanding the, the, the great partnership and the importance of the university and its role in the community, and frankly, bringing jobs and educate, or quality of life considerations as well. And so I think that's why that one is extra high. It's, because normally, K through 12 is pretty darn important, but you also had that university influence. And so really, my bigger takeaway is to continue your partnerships, continue to be strategic on how you're working with both the university, the public school district, and frankly, even any of your private providers as well.
Thank you.
Some of the narratives that isn't fully captured surrounding some of the things that rose to the top, so housing and stuff like that, do you know if folks were more specific as to some solutions, and is that something that will also be kind of outlined, some of those solutions?
Yes, absolutely. And so we do have some very, very specific recommendations or thoughts and ideas that we received from, especially some of the stakeholders that are very engaged in the topic of housing. And so whether it's on the affordable housing or housing availability, or even senior housing. And so as we start in the next phase, which is actually plan drafting, we'll get very specific in that feedback back with those, you know, we have this housing goal, so what are those specific action steps or recommendations, objectives, even policy considerations that we can provide to you to say, "Consider doing this. Consider this as an act, an action item." And so, yeah, and I can even think of just one off the top of my head that, that we will definitely be bringing forward for your consideration.
Sure. And I just use housing as one example, but there's a lot of things that were assessed. And, you know, even though we have a lot of minds between the council and the P&amp;Z and, you know, staff, I still think that there are other solutions that we may not have thought of. And so just wanted to make sure that some of that might have been, if it was offered, still have to use some discretion as to if it is a viable, you know, thing to push forward. So I appreciate hearing that we'll be hearing some of those opportunities.
Absolutely. And that's a little bit of our process. We don't want to keep anything from you. We want to share all that we heard and learned, but we also want to bring back what we think are some practical, workable solutions, both as the consultant, a little bit as your city staff, as well as their input and ideas, your, your advisory committee that you've provided to us, that we can help kind of vet through some of those. Because, yeah, you're right. Sometimes we can have a really great idea, but maybe there's something they're unaware of that legally as a city, we can't do that. Or, you know, that, that's been under, something that is not a, an authority we have to do, or is there another way to get to that same end goal? And that's, that's what we'll bring back to you.
Great. One last thing relating, somewhat relating to that, that you just mentioned are some of those solutions. There are some realities where, and I know Commissioner Townsend says this a lot, affordable to who, right?
Yeah.
And so when we are talking about affordable, affordability, even though there are some numbers that are already out there, but some of those really don't work in, in the real world. So I don't know how much of that could be mentioned, or, you know, these are, these are realities of the funding sources, but this is what we know are the, you know, realities of individuals and, you know, the max of their 30% of what they can pay and that type of stuff.
Absolutely. Yes. In fact, we received some very specific feedback exactly to what you're talking about as well. And so I think we can, we can bring some of that back to you.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah.
I just want to ask you about the numbers of the surveys. You know, I always, when come to like really big decision about the comprehensive plan or the strategic planning, normally the more people engage is better. And I see that the survey that they receive is only 421 surveys. I don't know how many they send out and they get 421, but Iowa City is 75,000 people or more. So don't you think like 421 survey, 421 people to decide for the whole city what our comprehensive plan look like? Isn't that low?
And great question, and I'd love to get into a little bit on that. And so one reason why we wanted to do, or we had recommended doing a statistically valid survey, is in comprehensive planning, it can be hard to get a good, it's hard to get numbers to show up, especially when people are in general happy. If people are really, really mad about something or a specific topic, well, as you know, they show up. But generally, when we're talking something a little more broad, like a comprehensive plan, and they're generally happy with their community and what's going on, it's hard to get participation. One of the things that's great about a statistically valid survey is we have that comfort that this does represent a wide cross-section or the entire community, is because of the methodology. And so being statistically valid, that 421 is a great survey response. In fact, their minimum to us back was either 350 or 400. They said, "We won't stop until we at least get 350 or 400 from our randomized household." And I don't remember if they picked up 800 or what number they started out with, but from their statistical calculations, getting to 350 or 400 met the metric as being statistically valid, that we can have a lot of confidence, in this case, they said 95% confidence, that this does represent the community, and has everything to do with the fact that it's randomized. You did not have an option to be selected for a survey. In fact, when, even where I live, my city uses ETC, I get excited the one time in my life that I got picked, my household got picked, and I filled out the survey outright away, and I'm like, "Yeah, this is great." And so because of that randomized nature, and then their internal metrics of trying to get that response rate, and they have some procedures on how they actually push to get a response rate, they're very confident that this is a good cross-section. Because even when we do our public engagement, we have our public meetings, our neighborhood meetings, or our website, I can't tell you it was a full cross-section of the community. That's where we fight really hard, and we like to do the stakeholder interviews to make sure I'm hearing all the different voices possible. And so that's why I love doing the surveys. And so I'd, I'd say that was a good number, actually.
Yeah. And my other question, I know this is random selections, but still, is this the survey has been translated to another language?
Yes.
How many with another language surveys have they received?
I do not have that information in me. I believe that detail is within the full body of the report they did submit to us. I'd have to go flip through it to find those pages. But it was available, available, we had it available in six, seven, eight languages, quite a few. And then they follow up very specifically with those households that they know from various data sources, where maybe English is not the primary language spoken at home. And so that was part of their, their task. That was part of our requirement of ETC, is to go out of the way to make sure we're getting all household voices heard.
I, I really would love to know that, because when you say like, "Most of the people are heavy," you know, that's great to like have the people like live here and heavier. But I know that there is some people struggle, and they will, they, they will mention that. And I would love to know how many, how many surveys in another language have you received back, or how many survey has been sent out, and most likely, sometimes people just don't like surveys. I understand that, too.
Yep. And so the, on the, how the statistically valid survey, the randomized households, they have data sources, because we all use smartphones and other things to communicate, where they have information that is publicly available on the languages spoken at various homes. And so if they have a specific property, they have data sources that says, "This is likely an English-speaking household," or maybe it's a Spanish-speaking household. And so they were targeting in those specific languages to those households for that follow-up, so that they could get to this good cross-section and randomized.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you speak a little bit about the selection criteria? I mean, it's, it is exhaustive. It's wonderful. But I was just curious if there, if you have any information about, you know, randomly, you know, which three items, this is in question 16, right? What in, so there's all those selections of your top choice. And I just wondered about those criteria that then people could select from.
Right.
How did that come into being? I mean, did you sort of cross-reference that with things that were in our existing comp plan or strategic plan, or is this just, this ends up being sort of, I don't know, common, I don't know, almost like a database of like, these are the types of things that are really good, are community-driven or, or community attractions that people tend to gravitate towards?
Yeah.
I just wanted to know a little bit more about the selection of the, of what people got to select.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's a great question for us. And so a little bit of both. And so this was very customized specifically for Iowa City, but frankly, it was a lot of input from both what we as your consultant team recommended as questions to ask when we've done this for other communities, as well as ETC. They're really good about wording, kind of helps with, we can't make the survey too long. You make it too long, nobody wants to finish it. We want a good completion rate as well. So it's a little bit of, these are the things we're kind of curious as we're going to craft a comprehensive plan. So we, it's that balance of, we try to get very specific, but we can't get so specific because it gets hard. And so it was really based on our experience of questions to ask, as well as ETC's questions. Then, of course, you know, vetting it with your city staff as well, but it was on your consultant team.
And I also liked very much that there was other, and then people took that opportunity as well. So, yeah.
Yeah. It was fun to read through some of the, the individual comments, or when people did the fill-in-the-blank.
You mentioned that the next step is drafting the plan. Is that right? Okay. And I don't want to get ahead of it, but I do know that we're, this, we are seeing the comprehensive plan overhaul as like a big step towards what then we will undertake our zoning code overhaul. So with that in mind, is this plan going to be kind of like a modification of the existing plan? Are we starting more from scratch? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah. Another great question. We don't throw away the old plan. That is always in consideration, but this is a brand-new plan. So we're giving you, we're not cutting and pasting. It's brand-new. So it'll be a new chapter structure, and it'll be a brand-new future land use map, recommendations, all of that in there. And I can even talk, so really, we've wrapped up that Phase Two, the public engagement, and now we're right into that, which is a little bit on talking with you today, but Phase Three, where we're kind of fleshing out these, kind of the big strategic goals, the big themes, these key ideas. But then we'll get into the plan drafting in Phase Four, where we review it, and I, forgive me for the steering committee having to spend so much time on this, but we have a whole series of meetings with our advisory committee to actually go through chapter by chapter with us. When we're in a comfortable spot, we feel like we're in a good direction, but it's still very much a draft, that's when we bring it back out to the community and say, "Okay, folks, this is what we heard from you. This is what we drafted. Did we get this right? Does this address what you told us? This is, makes sense?" So that then there's that level of comfort that this is what the community wants, though, as we bring it back to you as the planning commission and you as the elected officials.
Related to that, our current comprehensive plan has a lot of appendages, lots of district plans. How will that be addressed with the future forthcoming comprehensive plan? Will those be folded into a redo, or will we continue to have multiple appendices with the different comp plan add-ons?
It's going to be my goal, and I want to make sure I didn't go, we're very flexible and adaptable to make this plan the way you want it. However, our recommendation is that we're, we're really creating, if we're going to have any appendix sections, that it's new, it's updated. And so even those, some of those district plans, that the thought process might be that we, we start sliding away from those and really have a much more role. that we, we start sliding away from those and really have a much more robust future land use plan that is a cohesive one-piece document. And then, you know, even under the comments of, of the next steps, give some big-picture direction on what to watch for in the code updates as well. What are those things we're trying to affect and change? That we're doing, some of that vetting for you with this comprehensive plan.
Can I jump in real fast? Have you found that, have you had similar experiences elsewhere where that move from sort of a quilt, if you will, of district plans to, like you said, a more robust overall comprehensive plan? Have you seen success in that?
Yes, from a predictive.
How to define success, by the way.
Every community is different, and there's more than one correct way to do anything. But based on some of the initial feedback we've had on the district-level plans, maybe not being exactly what you want or need, that it may be a better structure to be a little more specific with your future land use plan, the map itself, some of the goals, policies. They can be focused into certain areas, but so many of them also apply more citywide. And my concern is maybe some of the district plans locked in a box a little too far as well. Again, ultimately, we're going to do, you know, what works best for you. But right now, that's kind of where I'm thinking and where I'm, based on the kind of the feedback, I might suggest we head to. And then, yeah, this, this actually is really common kind of on how we're doing comprehensive planning, that we have this really robust future land use section, land use plan section, that really helps serve as the basis for any zoning code, subdivision regulation updates, let alone that perfect tool, or better tool, to then evaluate development proposals as they come in, and rezonings. And frankly, as new territory might be added to the city, that that's what I want to give you guys, is this really good tool that your planning commission uses to, when they're making a recommendation on to you as the elected officials.
To continue on the same theme, I totally understand why professional city staff would want to rein in all of these appendices, especially because they've developed asymmetrically. Some of them are really well-developed, where lots of engagement, and there's a lot of precision in what should be a comprehensive plan. And some have just were developed and left to sort of linger. So, I think that, that, from a planning perspective, it makes sense to bring them in. But, did you have the level of conversation with community members who feel it's very important for them that they have specific control or say over their neighborhood or their district? In your conversations or through survey, were you able to glean that, whether or not that's really important to members of our community or not?
In those focus group meetings where we met with so many of the different kind of neighborhood areas and those neighborhood representatives, it was a little bit of a mixed bag. Many of them had no idea there was a district plan. Some of them said, "This isn't doing anything for us." And then, others, I would say, had concern with change in their area over time. And that's where I think we can still address some of those concerns with a more robust future land use plan, that I'm not sure that these area plans, these district plans are giving you what you want and what you need.
Is it fair to say the central district plan is the one that probably has a lot of engagement?
Yes, that would be fair. And that may be something that is, maybe there's one that's a holdover, or a redo, or an update.
Okay.
And that's not uncommon. It's much less common to have so many individual-like neighborhood plans. It's normally reserved only for like a downtown, a kind of a special interest area.
I don't want to monopolize, I do, can you go back two slides, or maybe it's just one slide? Yeah, so, for all of these items, except for, well, six and eight, but mostly six, I'm curious to hear more about how, what is city services, because everything up there is a service. What is city services getting that's not in the other seven items? And how does that influence the comprehensive plan?
So, here's one of the fun things when we try to come up with the big buckets to try to put things under. And when we get into goals and recommendations, you're going to run into this again, often, one theme or idea could fall under several different areas. So, there is a bit of overlap. Because, you know, I could almost make that culture and place-making argument is something related to parks and recreation. Sustainability and resiliency can be, have even a tie to economic development. So, sometimes there is a little bit overlap. City services, I might kind of give you the umbrella. That's the really important fundamental things we need, they're just not quite so sexy. It's a little more of the flush-drink-drive, you know, we got to have roads, we got to have water, we got to have sewer, that, those types of services, let alone, you know, building inspection, rental housing inspection, all those other types of nuts and bolts services that are so darn important, but they just, they're not as shiny.
Because we are in that kind of visioning and goal establishment, can you talk a little bit about maybe some of the shifts from the, the existing comprehensive plan? Kind of what's kind of gone up, what's gone down, as far as priorities are concerned?
Yeah, a great challenge question there, too. This is going to sound like an easy answer. Housing's always been important, it's never been more important. So, housing is definitely, since your last comprehensive plan moved up quite a bit. To some extent, even how we're thinking about sustainability and resiliency has changed. When you see more information on this, I think you're going to hear, see a lot more about storm hazard, resiliency to, you know, severe weather incidents, things like that. The other one is place-making, that's become more and more of an important emphasis when we're doing community planning, is thinking long-term quality of life. Why do people want to live here? It's not just because they can get a job, find a house. They also want to be in a community they love, that there's things to do, there's great places to be. Parks has always been important, but I didn't want to say that in front of any parks and staff.
Okay, I guess it's me, and my mic is coming apart. Couple of things, I'm happy to hear that you're not just giving us more questions, which we've, for 40 years, we've heard the concerns of Iowa City, but you're also going to offer some solutions, possible solutions we buy into. When we talk about housing, though, are we talking about homeownership, or are we talking about rentals? There's a big difference in how a family versus that, and what an effect it has on the community. So, I hope that you're talking more homeownership than we are rentals, which have a cap on how long those rentals will last. So, we're not really attacking that affordable housing piece. Education, I guess, I keep hearing all this about higher education is not that important anymore. Now, why is that?
Okay.
As our higher education versus trades. So, I hope that that's part of the, of what you're going to talk about. The other thing, there's one other thing. I guess those are the big, the big points I wanted, was the affordable housing piece and the education piece. Because I keep hearing, I mean, I was of the, of the group that education was everything. And with this younger generation, it's, seems to not be as important. And what's the cost of it versus trade? What's the, what's the placement of jobs versus trades? So, I just want to make sure that those are covered in that, in that piece.
Yeah, I very much appreciate that. Though, if I can, just respond on the housing. It's a little bit on why we say "housing for all," because it is. We do see the importance of not just a rental housing product, but an owner-occupied housing product, a affordable, very affordable, or you're even, you know, fully subsidized, to high-end executive. And so, I really see that there's demand at all price points and needs at all prices. Obviously, the harder ones for the market to bear are those affordable products, whether it's entry-level, single-family, which is just impossible, or very affordable three-bedroom apartments, which are another near-impossible.
Well, Iowa City has been put in this very strange position, where we've got the university with some top salaries, and then we've got a lot of people that don't have homes at all.
Yes.
So, when you combine those and then give us what the formula says that we're supposed to have, it's, it's pretty outrageous.
Yeah.
But I guess that's what I'm throwing back to you, too.
You, you have quite the dichotomy in the, the spectrum for housing here.
Of course.
Absolutely, and need.
All right.
I do have one final question.
All right.
And I'm not exactly sure how to phrase it, but I was looking through the various criteria, selection criteria on a number of questions. And I found it really interesting because it was very high up. It's question number 12, and it talks about land use and development, and sort of what would you like to see more of, about the same or fewer? But that was the only question that actually talked about daycares, and yet, I know it ranked very high in terms of need, right? It was within, because it, it rose to the top four. And so, I'm just kind of curious, because earlier on, when you were talking, you said, "One of the things that's great about these surveys is you can ask the same question in multiple ways." And so, this is the only question that I saw that actually had that selection. So, on the one hand, it might seem like an outlier. On the other, as you're combing through all the data, I think that would be something, and perhaps it came through in other ways, in one-on-ones or your, your focus groups. But that seems to be something as well to kind of maybe dig into, if possible. Because it's certainly something that we know is an issue. I mean, it is nationally and certainly statewide, but here, too, so.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great one. And, and so, definitely in stakeholder interviews, focus group meetings, as well as some of the listening sessions, heard that over and over. And that's why that, that does pop up on our list as an important topic. And frankly, some people gave us some very specific ideas.
Great.
Of options.
That would be fantastic.
None of them are easy, but on addressing, trying to address daycare.
Yeah, I just thought it was very interesting, because it, it stood out to me. But then, as I was coming through, I was like, "Oh, it's actually only on one question." So, I love that it still rose up as a point of focus.
Do you have any examples on what some of those community suggestions were?
One was a direct subsidy for employee pay. And I believe there was one program that did that, and that's either expired or wasn't. Yeah, I don't know that the funding continued, I'd have to go back and look at my notes. But that was one of the specific ones. There are some other little tricks. We always make sure, you know, regulatory-wise, are there any barriers to the in-home daycares? Are there any other, you know, issues or concerns? I don't know anything like that yet, but that, one of those top ones that comes to mind was just pay. Trying to increase the pay of the actual providers. I know the profitability for any, even a commercial center is hard.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yes, and I want to thank the commissioners as well for attending. Yes, all right, great, enjoy the rest of the day.
Good to see you guys.
So, we're being dismissed. Thank you for inviting us.
Have a good one.
All right. All right, we're going to move on with our agenda. We're going to move on to item number two, clarification of agenda items. All right, we're going to move on to item number three, information packet discussion, October 9th. October 16th.
Yeah, in October 16th, let me see, what's IBs is? Anyway, the city manager housing information. So, I've been talking about this as, we need this information so we can just remind ourselves about it. I don't know if you guys, this is really have a lot of good informations. Each time I read it, it just like have rich informations. I like it. But, you know, I was really hoping that if we can put the numbers of the, you know, of the, how many people are like in the waiting list, or like the homeless people also in, you know, in the agenda, the formal agenda somewhere. This is in the info package, you know, I, sometime I struggle myself to find things like on the IBs. Like I have to scroll down and go click on the, you know, to find it. So, but I, I just want only two like square kind of in the front page of the agenda. Just not all this information, only how many people are in the waiting list. So, we can just look at it and see from last month if this has been reduced, increased, or whatever. When I, when I said this last time, I meant in the agenda, like the main agenda. So.
So, you would just want maybe just like two or three numbers? The number of people on the waiting list for public housing? The number of people who are unsheltered homeless?
Homeless.
Okay.
There's only that.
Or just like two numbers, just like unsheltered homeless, this number?
Two number, yeah, whatever, they can be creative. But to be there, so we can just like look at it like this, and.
Are you referring to this?
Yeah, but only the, the last two number here. See, it looked like how many people in the waiting list, you know, for the housing voucher. Because we, we don't get update for the homeless like regularly, even that's fine. Like whenever we get it, we can change the numbers. But for, for the waiting list, Iowa City Housing Authority waiting list.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, it's on page 233, the chart that I think is what you're asking for, is just the October 2025 numbers, currently the.
Yes, this is a monthly number. And, you know, I just wanted to see it monthly, one, one time a month, you know, it's not like really. Yeah, it does. You know, we just, I want to make sure like that people are agreeing to this, because this is going to go to the agenda.
So, my assumption is it's just at the top of the agenda, or it's somewhere on the agenda?
Yeah, it's just like a box in the agenda, housing, I don't know, what is the agenda?
But it won't be a.
It's not an item, though.
I mean.
Yeah.
It would, there would just be something to put on the front of the agenda, so it would remind us of the numbers to make sure, you know, just some.
We need to work on this.
And also, so the public can have better access to that information, instead of it being on page, whatever, on IP, whatever, you know, which is, yeah.
If it needed to be attached to an item, we could, I mean, granted, it's at the end of the agenda, but there is council information, we could put that there as well, if it needed to be attached to a specific item, right?
I don't have any objection to highlighting the, the waiting list, putting that in front of our faces. I just wonder about the, if the intent is to have it be, is it more for us, or is it more for the public? And like, just, just to make sure that it's the most effective tool for whatever piece of information we're wanting them to have, so.
I think it's for everyone, because, you know, even the people who really care about housing, they don't have to call the, the city of Iowa City each time and ask them, "Hey, how many people you have in the waiting list?" And like something there, it will specific the need for everyone. And I, I don't see like this is going to change anything. This is, the only thing is going to highlight what the need is, and that's it.
Do you think a lot of people who want to know that information are looking at the agenda? Or do you think they're going to like the city?
No, they're going everywhere.
They're going to the city's website.
If somebody want to do a research or anything like about that, they are not going to look at our agenda.
I, I think Councilor Burgers' question's a good one, though, except for trying to help, who are we trying to help and how do we best help them? And I don't have, I don't have any objections to it being printed in multiple locations. I just am thinking, what's the most effective and who are we trying to serve? And I don't have a problem finding it myself, but if there are people in the community who want to find it, maybe there's a website location that would make it easier.
Not everybody got the website, the agenda is printed. Agenda is printed here, everybody can do it like, okay. And also like going, going there, if you just write Iowa City Council Agenda, it will bubble. Not like going somewhere else and going like everywhere.
I, I view it as, for one, just council and staff accountability, self-accountability, you know, just like looking at the numbers every time, you know, every time we open up the agenda. Not to say that we're not all thinking about it, but reminders aren't, aren't bad. And also if we get people who maybe didn't know, just looking at the agenda for another reason, it's just front and center, just the, just kind of the facts of where we are. These are how many people are on the street, these are how many people are waiting for the voucher list. And then if they have questions about that, they can talk to us or staff about it and then that can bring people into the conversation and.
Yeah.
Does this serve as notice?
Well, I, I was just thinking about that, too. I mean, as council's aware, the, the normal split between the information packet and the agenda is for informational purposes, which I think this is, versus action items that require council votes. And if I'm understanding it correctly, this is still an informational sheet. I would want to make sure that if we did want to somehow add it to, let's say, the cover page of the agenda, that it wouldn't somehow imply that this is a discussion item or an action item unless council deliberately wanted that to be the case. But I would hate for either the members of the public to be misled into thinking that this is going to be an item which they can come and give public comment on and, and, you know, discuss as a specific agenda item, or that council was going to be taking action some way or another on this item. And I'm a little fearful that if we put it on the formal agenda, that that might be implied. Now, we could, you know, be explicit in saying that that's not the case, this is for informational purposes only and so forth. But I, I guess one of my concerns would be this is an item that we'd like to highlight and, and I think that's great. You know, next month, will there be another item? And then before we know it, the whole information packet is found, I mean, you know, again, that may not happen, but there's some risk of that in kind of interrupting the normal split of informational versus action. You folks can do it if you wish, but those are my concerns.
I have one.
But I think, yeah, but I just want to reply to that. I think like when you say the public will get confused, I think the public know that the only thing that we can, we can discuss is in the formal agenda, which is after the call of, call the meeting to orders. And I'm not suggesting to put it there by any means.
Okay, you, you were thinking of like on the front page, for example?
Yeah, and like somewhere in the front page, we are telling the people what's this, what's this, you know, the meeting, what's this meeting about, what and how they can access it. We can just have another line, our waiting list for this like this, just like another item outside of like the agenda is, is just like that. That's, nobody will say, oh, we need to talk about that. No, I don't think so, because I'm not suggesting it to be on the formal agenda, no.
One, one question I have is related to if we're wanting to highlight this and the other question is like who is the intended audience? The folks that are, you know, maybe really wanting to know that number, are they going to come to our agenda to find it? All that's questions that I think we don't absolutely need to answer if the need is for it to be somewhere, you know, on the formal agenda. I do have a question about if it would be, you know, maybe acceptable to have like the, because it's in this information, it's in this information packet, if we still had, you know, in the information packet and then we're October 16th, just like when we pull certain things that's in the information packet, for instance. Yeah, like some things we know we need to talk about and we pull it right here if we're talking about like our, our, our calendar for council. We pull it here. So what I, you know, am thinking about, if it was here on the October 16th and we had highlighted, you know, the, what's in black up here, the black and October 25th, and then it would just always be here. So it's still all the information here because this is important information to always have. And it will be highlighted. I think the, the desire that I hear is for it to be highlighted. And I think if it was pulled here, that way we'll always have that number whenever it is in the packet, which is once a month.
So it's on the work agenda?
I think you, you're talking about the work session, yeah. I, I really don't care if it's a work session or in here, but I need it to be on the, like first page. But you just give me like a good idea. Like for example, here we have clarification of agenda item all the time, every council we have that. Can we say also like something, information about a waiting list, a housing, like waiting list or something like that to be just added to the work session and all the time be there? And we can also, if we have a bid, if we don't have a bid, we can just say, you know, we can just move it and it will be just like one item all the time in the work session agenda.
So I think if we, since we know this is coming once a month, what I would suggest is based on what you're requesting, is that we have this item cited on the agenda like we would, anything we want to pull out, we'll say this is IP six. Is this IP six?
This is, yeah, I didn't see that.
So we would, we would have here IP six and then we would want just, there's a lot of information there, but we would want to just highlight and post.
The last.
The last month that is being reported and just having the, the categories up top.
Exactly, you know, it can be here.
And it fits because it's information.
Yes, exactly.
But it's pulled out enough so that somebody can, doesn't have to go through the whole packet.
Sure. I'm for that if you guys agree.
I think it, I mean, for what it's worth, I think it makes sense with that clarity to have it in work session, which is information for the public. And, and then we can do from, you know, our formal meetings or council information and we can say, hey, starting up, we're going to do this, right? And then we just.
And this way we know that the public are not going to talk about it, so here.
Should we, would you like us to use language that makes it clear that this is just informational reporting as opposed to this is going to be an item to be discussed by council?
So it, it won't be in the, on the formal agenda now.
Work session.
It'll be on the work session and it'll be under informational packet discussions. And when it is reported, we will have the table, it's on page 233.
Right.
I did say 233. And it's the table one, but it's just was in the category that's in bold and then the last month. So we would just, we would always highlight when we have the Housing Authority waiting list update. So we'll talk about that on the IP six. And then we would just have those two there. So that just lets easy, at a glance, numbers, council know we can go there and talk about it in greater detail because all of the information will be there.
Okay. So we'll just save for council information, listing information that you just described and that's.
Yeah, that's it.
Can, can we just clarify? Do we, do we want to continue with the housing information piece, that, that first memo that has a kind of a housing fact per meeting? Do you still want us to do that?
On the IB?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it's helpful.
Yeah, it's very helpful, very nice information.
And I always look for new starts when they're available for construction permits.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
And that doesn't need to be every month or.
I think this is just like a front page highlighting of that is essentially what and with the, some of the raw, the main raw numbers there.
All right. Any other clarif, so I heard a majority of council say yes to that. Any other clarification for staff? All right, great. Any other items from the October 16th IP? We're going to move on to number four, University of Iowa Student Government Update, USG. Hello, hello?
Hello, sorry, I was MIA for so long. I was taking time to crunch the data, finish up our renters guide, which is done. And also doing the application and interview process for my long-awaited new deputy city liaison. I'm going to let her introduce herself real quick.
All right, we see someone new.
Hi, I'm Eden Coy. I'm the deputy city liaison. I'm a first year at the university. I'm majoring in international relations with minors in Chinese and philosophy and a human rights certificate, and I'm very excited to work with everyone.
Right, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's absolutely great. I do have a couple of announcements this week. One of our senators is currently working on a multicultural food drive initiative. She wants to partner with a couple of food pantries around Iowa City and North Liberty Quarleville to then donate all of the proceeds there. It's still a work in progress, but I'm, I think it's pretty cool. She might want to partner with somewhere downtown to host the food drive. We haven't really figured out exactly what we're doing with that yet. Our sustainability team is currently in contact with ICDD because they're currently working on maybe painting a new mural downtown, something sustainability focused. And then also, we are kind of trying to revive an initiative from last year, the coat check thing with downtown. Last year, it wasn't as successful as the previous admin had hoped, but this year they are going to rent one of those, like, you know, the boxes they have for the pop-up stores. I think that we're going to rent one of those to operate the coat check out of. So we're excited to see how that goes this year, too.
And I know that there is a meeting, there is a meeting on November, not a meeting, like gathering at the, November 12th, right, the USG reception?
I think, I think that's the Senate faculty. The faculty, I think it's faculty senate. I had to reread it. I don't think it's for USG.
It's not USG?
No, it's Senate faculty.
I thought the same thing when I read it.
Yeah.
So we all have really similar names.
Okay, okay.
No, I had to read it.
As a legislative body at the university.
Yes, okay, I saw that's you guys.
Oh, another fun thing is the graduate hotel that we have, since they have locations in a lot of the same cities as other Big Ten schools, Indiana University has just partnered with their graduate hotel to start a LEASTGAP program. And Michigan also just reached out today to start their own LEASTGAP program. We haven't figured out if it's going to be with their graduate or not yet, but so far they're just still a fantastic partner. Love the graduate hotel and everybody who works there, they're all so nice, just big shout out to them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. All right, we're on to item number five, council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. We're all at the Joint Entities Committee yesterday.
That counts, yeah.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, and I think, I was not, I came late, I saw this five o'clock, but after I read, you know, the recommendations by like Catholic Walker House and it's good for me, was I think there is a lot of good information, yeah, and I think it's worth to look into it and to see what we can do about it.
Yeah, same thought.
All right, any other updates? Here are none. We are adjourned from work session and we'll be back at 6:00 PM for our formal meeting.